We will call the meeting to order and as usual for public forum. But beforehand, let me just read our public participation policy. The Hatfield Select Board welcomes everyone to its meetings and all other public meetings of the Town of Hatfield. All regular and special meetings of the boards and committees of the Town of Hatfield shall be open to the public and shall conform to the open meeting law. Executive sessions are closed to the public and will be held only as prescribed by the statutes of the Commonwealth of Massachusetts. It is important to recognize that the open meeting law affords the opportunity to listen to the proceedings but not necessarily participate. During meetings of the Select Board, an attempt will be made to find a balance between hearing from members of the community and conducting the required business of the Hatfield Select Board. So, do we have anyone here for public forum or is anyone joining us online for public forum? Okay, just a couple of quick announcements. I want to remind everybody that May 30th is the 350th Parade. This is a very long extended, I think it's a seven mile route through Hatfield. Lots of preparation going into this. It's going to be absolutely terrific. It's going to be a really great parade. It starts at 1:00. The route is posted on the Hatfield 350th Facebook page and it's up on the website, right, Marlene? The Town of Hatfield website. So if anyone has any questions about the route or anything like that, they should probably reach out to Town Hall. You could call Town Hall and get those questions answered. And again, the route is that long so that we, people have lots of various locations throughout town to go so we don't have a lot of people congregating in one specific area. The other thing I want to mention, I had a nice letter, I got a nice email, very thoughtfully written email from a Smith Academy athlete last week, asking me if there's anything we could do about people who are leaving their dog poo on the playing fields at Smith Academy. This has long been a problem. People run their dogs there, which is great. I've run my dog there. It's a great place to let them run. We want to make sure that residents can use that space. But please keep in mind that kids then go out there and play sports on those fields. And I don't think anybody thinks it's appropriate for them to have to deal with dog messes out there. So if you're going to run your dog on any public land, this goes, you know, this goes for the Hatfield Elementary School too because we have kids playing rec sports down there. Please pick up after it and take it with you. Throw it in a trash can or bring it home. So let's, let's just try to do the courteous thing and...
I have an announcement.
Sure.
Okay. As you know, the parade is on the 30th, which is the same day as Memorial Day activities for the Legion. So there's been some modifications. Most of the time, the Legion leaves at 10:00 in the morning to go to all the cemeteries to honor our veterans. But this year, they'll be leaving at 9:30 in case anybody wants to attend. And then at 10:45 a.m., there will be a short ceremony in front of the Town Hall. So I just wanted to let people know because I know on Memorial Day, the Honor Guard from the Legion does meet people at various cemeteries. So it'll be a half an hour earlier this year. And some people like to come to Town Hall, so it'll be 10:45. Hopefully, we'll have a small ceremony. I just want to let the town know that.
Oh, I'm glad to know that. I'm going to write that down. Okay. Thank you actually very much, Ed, for pointing that out because that's always a very nice ceremony. Okay. Brian, did you have anything?
I did not, thank you.
Anything else?
I'd just like to mention that the library is open now for browsing. So anybody interested can check out the hours on the website.
That's really great. And kids went back to school since our last meeting, full days, and sports started. And that all feels really good and like terrific progress. And I know I have a very happy student at home being back, back in action. Okay, so approval of minutes, I don't think we had any, did we?
No.
Okay. And then we, we did have a request to take the agenda out of order.
Yes.
We, one of the things, sorry, my glasses fog up. I have to, I have to juggle this. So we have, one of our agenda items is to set the quorum, oh, here it is, set the quorum for town meeting because we still have the leeway of changing that because of COVID and, you know, people not, maybe not wanting to come like they would normally. So we do have our moderator here with us to discuss that. Thanks for being here tonight, Joe. Did you, we did advertise this, by the way. Notice was given that this would be decided tonight and there was a legal notice in the paper as is prescribed by the, it's the governor's order, right?
No, actually, legislature just says that you must make public notice. It doesn't state that it's required to be advertised in the newspaper, but we did.
We did it, okay.
Well, and we're, we're still under the governor's emergency orders.
That's what I mean, yeah.
Correct, yeah.
So the same still goes. So, you know, a reduced quorum is still allowed. Most towns have been using that option because with so many meetings outside, you don't know what the weather's going to be. And with all the work done by all of you people in this room, the Finance Committee, all the town boards, to do all that and not have enough people is, is really, it would be sad. So last year, we had no idea of the pandemic and like most towns, we went to 10%. In some regards, going to 10% actually attracted more people because we had way more than that, which was, was fine. But this year, we do know more, not all, but more, many more people are vaccinated. Again, not all, so safety is still the call of the day. To hold an outside town meeting, again, as I said, is all weather dependent. So if you had 38 people, you've got, as a quorum, you've got 50%. Lydia, in one of your prior meetings, mentioned maybe, maybe 45. I'm fine with a low number and, and I'm going to kind of defer it toward you guys, but it should be something low enough where we're never going to gamble on what's the right number under the current situation. Next year, it hopefully is going to be right back to where we used to be and it's not a problem. But also for an outside meeting, yeah, last year, we were so lucky, we had beautiful weather. I hope it's the same this year. But last year, you guys did great and you kept it like 20, under 20 articles. And we were so cautious to not keep people there for too late. We're going to be starting at 6:00. So this year, we've already, we've got 30 articles on the list already. There's a couple that are going to consume some time. And I would suggest a safe number, maybe, maybe looking at a third, you know, that's 24, 25, maybe 30 people. We should, and I hope to God we have more than that, but if we didn't, let's say it was a torrential storm, I mean, we've got to get through this. We have to, we have to operate as a town. And the beginning, because there's 30 articles, I will again this year, use a consent agenda that takes the first four articles that are always the standard ones every year, state borrowing, all the things that Sharon has to do, highway money, school money, of course, we're going to accept that. So if I do a consent agenda, I can pull those four into one vote. I've asked Chief Bob Flaherty as emergency planning. He's going to try to set it up like last year, but he uses the DPW, the police, the fire, they do a great job. But because communication is such a problem, I'm going to try to use this forum and when we do the candidate statements, to remind people to bring lawn chairs in case, in case of they're uncomfortable, too uncomfortable sitting inside. We might move some of the picnic tables out so they can have their, their lawn chairs inside. Bob's thinking of, you know, more individual seating. So he was going to ask the DPW to bring some of the chairs from the high school, stack them up. And if people didn't have a chair or forgot one, you know, those picnic tables are darn uncomfortable, so they could at least take a chair with a little padding and move it over there. This year, there are no tents available. Bob has checked everywhere, Connecticut, New Hampshire, Vermont, Rhode Island, every college and university has booked every tent possible for their events. So we can't...
And restaurants have them now.
Restaurants have them. We can't get a tent. I've asked him about the tents outside of the school, but he said, you know, for that many people around, if it was windy, they're going to come down on them and we, and we don't need that. People should bring water. If you're going to sit outside, you know, bring an umbrella, you know, just, just for a little staying out of the sun, if you want a little bit of social distancing. And then, and then I was going to ask Marlene, possibly, we can check with the DPW to make sure the bathrooms this year would be open. Last year, we had no idea of the pandemic. We have a better idea, but just in case somebody is inconvenienced and they, they could use that. So May 11th, we would start promptly at 6:00 p.m. And last year, Lydia had asked if we could get people there a little bit early because people tend to get there and want to socialize, but you've got your, your counters letting people come in, giving them their voter card. Well, they want to know what's going on as well. And if we start promptly at 6:00 and people are still checking in at 6:15, that's rather unfair to, to the registrators. So I think people can still have a very nice time and a nice evening out, but I'm leaning toward you guys as to what number would you feel comfortable with for a quorum? I mean, I really think it should be, you know, down under that 40, 35 number. And we know we'll have more, but better be safe than sorry.
Okay. I, I'm sorry.
No, that's okay.
I was simply going to say, I think maybe in the 33% range, which would be 20, you know, 25 people.
25 people, just make it 25 people.
A third.
And that's like indicative of this pandemic. Are we a third, are we a third out of the gate? Well, maybe we are.
Yeah. So, all right. So I'll actually make a motion that the town quorum number for May 11th be set at a minimum of 25.
Yeah, yeah.
Excellent. A motion made in second. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
That was very thorough and great reminders for people with, with one exception, I think we should remind people that it's BYOB. Bring your own bug spray because there's a lot of mosquitoes down by the pavilion. So I would say add that to your list of things you want to bring.
Absolutely.
If you're so inclined.
Thank you.
Excellent, Joe.
And I appreciate all the work you guys have done to keep it at 30 articles. And let's hope we get through this nice and smooth and everybody has a nice visit and they get home safely, so.
You know what? You're right. We had such nice weather. It was, I think everybody really enjoyed being down there last year.
Absolutely.
It was terrific. So I just, it'd be great if we could get that lucky, but you're right. I mean...
And then, you know, Bob's going to have to set a little thing aside for people that are non-voters, maybe a little taped out area so that they can sit aside.
I'm sure he'll figure that out.
But Bob does a great job at that.
Yes, he does.
So he's got it down. I have to, I have to commend Bob, the PD and the DPW because in most towns I know of, it's the selectmen and moderator have to lay out everything. And that's what emergency planning is for.
Yeah, they've done a great job.
Yeah, they, they always do a great job. They had it, everything ran really smoothly last time, and Lydia too.
Absolutely.
Right, setting everything up, getting everybody down there, getting everything, so...
Through team effort.
A lot of prep and a lot of work. So thank you so very much.
All right, great, thank you. It was an easier decision this time after having been through it a couple times.
Right, yeah, I agree.
You know, it seems so strange to want to reduce a quorum, but here we are. Okay, so let's get back on track. Our, our first item is a COVID-19 update.
Actually, if I could interrupt for a moment, please. We did advertise the liquor license hearing for 5:45, so if we could take that up and then apologize for keeping Claudia, but we really should hold that.
Yeah, we should hold that too. Okay, great. Peter is here. Did you want to step up?
I don't think you need to call enough.
Yeah, I have this. So I will open this hearing, which is a hearing on a restaurant wine and malt liquor license for NBZ Inc. doing business as Smithsonian Chowder House at 1 West Hatfield. There's nothing on here I have to read officially, is there, Marlene?
Just to open the hearing...
Yeah, so I did that. We have Peter Langlois here. Public comments will be taken during the hearing.
Right.
And discretion may be used on comments received further.
And I'm just hearing from the applicant.
Not required to know...
What's that? And we just hear from the applicant.
You're on.
Need I say anything about trying to operate in a pandemic? So we're applying for a beer and wine license, you know, just to try to raise our check average, make it a better place or a more fun place for people to come. We pivoted our menu last year during the pandemic and the Chowder House did very well, but without the catering business, you know, we were on the bone all summer long. And, you know, we lost 300 to 400 grand worth of catering business last year, but the Chowder House showed some nice growth over the year before. But, you know, it wasn't until a pand, it took a pandemic for me to realize that the Chowder House isn't really sustainable by itself with its check average the way it is.
Right.
We made, you know, we made the menu pivots last year, raised the check average, raised the sales. And I'm really just looking to sort of take one more step into, to ensure our sustainability, you know, in the, in the neighborhood there. So we're not, we're not looking to have a rave every Friday night. We're not looking to, you know, possibly, you know, we're going to enhance our outdoor seating by, with a small pavilion that's in the works right now. And so we just like to...
And will patrons be able to take their beer and wine out to their outdoor seating?
So we have the outdoor seating on our, on our sketch that we turned in.
Oh, yeah.
You know, we have a pavilion that'll hold maybe eight picnic tables socially distanced for, you know, at, for now. And yeah, we'd just like to add one more thing into the mix there. We brought in, started doing pizza, started doing dinners, got, just pivoted our menu enough to make it through the meat of the pandemic and now we want to sustain. So, and when I say sustain, it really is a matter of being competitive as the restaurants all start to reopen, like we want to be competitive. We don't want to go back to being just the soup and grilled cheese house. So we want to, you know, we want to be, we want to be competitive as more options start to open up for people because catering isn't going to bounce back this year either. So, you know, there's no one, no one booking a wedding right now for July. So, you know, so yeah, just trying to enhance our business.
Great, I think it's great. Do you have any questions?
No, I just, I don't know if your hours will change. That's the only question I was thinking.
So we're thinking, we're thinking we're probably going to go past, I mean, we scaled back to 6:00 during the pandemic. We basically went 11:00 to 6:00 and we felt like it was really successful for us. But I would think in the summer, we'd probably like to stretch out a little bit closer to 8:00, closer to, you know, and then as fall comes and it gets colder, it gets darker earlier, we probably would scale back to 7:00 and so probably float with the seasons kind of thing, so.
No, I just think it's great that if we can help our businesses in town, then I think I'm in favor of helping our businesses in town. And I know with your restaurant, I've never heard any complaints as far as problems or anything like that. And you, you've always run an outstanding business.
Yeah, I mean, we had a clean record when we were on Elm Street. We didn't really have any problems. Ironically, I was telling somebody today that I, we got busted one time on a, on a sting and the kid that was the bartender got busted when he was working for me at rafters. When I was running rafters, he got burned at both places. And not because he was a bad bartender, just, you know, one got by himself. But we had one, one infraction during the old Smithsonian and that was, and that was a long time ago, so.
And the only other question I have is for Marlene. How many of these licenses do we have open?
For the wine and malt, I believe there was five.
Okay.
I think it's five.
Okay.
We do have it available.
We have them available, that's all I just wanted to ask.
Yeah, that was the first thing we checked.
Did, I'm assuming no one's on here for any comment about this, joining us digitally? Doesn't look like it. Oh, you, I'm sorry, I thought maybe you were here for something else. You wanted to speak to this issue?
I'd like to speak to this issue.
Sure, come, sure.
My name's Paul Dossel, Main Street. Langlois came to town almost 25 years ago. They ran a very, very successful business on Elm Street. And he moved on and has been a very strong supporter of the Hatfield American Legion, the Hatfield Lions Club. He's catered the academic achievement night for Smith Academy for 20, the whole time he's been here for our students here. Big supporter of the athletic programs. I recall when the kids were playing whatever sport they were playing, especially if they got to a championship, the Smithsonian was a, was a hangout after the game. And one year, they won a state championship in field hockey. And we got to the restaurant after the game was over and he had a cake. Smith Academy, state champions, sitting on a table there. How you ever found out about it, I'll remember that.
Took a leap of faith in the afternoon.
They were a safe bet.
Yeah, I had both, I had both cakes. I never told them, but I had both.
He's been a very strong supporter and a very strong advocate for the Town of Hatfield. And I think not to give him a grant this license to the Langlois family, especially during this time of the pandemic, which he discussed, when most restaurants have closed, he reinvented himself and had a tremendous takeout business, not as tremendous probably as he would like. And even, his family even opened up another restaurant.
I was going to mention that.
When, when many restaurants in the valley here were closing. So anything that we can get to attract business to our, to our town, I think would be a benefit. I think it would be a big disservice if this license was not granted to Mr. Langlois, a longtime business owner here in Hatfield and also a resident of Hatfield. So we thank him for his dedicated service to our community.
Oh, you forgot Cub Scouts. He was a supporter for Cub Scouts for years too.
Yeah, there's a long list. And I, you know, I certainly agree with everything you said, Paul, no question.
Thank you.
And I really did want to mention that one of your sons has opened Legacy, which I've had the chance to have a couple times, unbelievably delicious.
Thank you.
So good.
Thanks.
So good and really remarkable, like as Paul mentioned, to, to do that in the middle of all of this. But you've been doing well because I've tried to order a couple other times and it was sold out, so that's, that's a good sign. Okay, so anything else we have to do in relation to this other than make a motion?
We'll have to close the hearing.
Okay.
When you're ready.
I would like to close the hearing. Do we need a motion on that?
No.
Okay.
I will make a motion to grant a new, let me, can't even read, to grant a new on-premise restaurant wines and malt beverages license to NBZ Incorporated doing business at Smithsonian and Chowder House at 1 West Street, Hatfield, Massachusetts.
And I'll second that.
A motion made in second. Any further discussion?
I just want to echo Paul's comments and, and yours and Ed's, Diana. And I'm glad to do this on behalf of Peter and Terry and the Langlois family. You guys have always been huge supporters of everything Paul mentioned, but I remember all my years on the school committee, it was perfect attendance award, I mean, it was everything. You, you guys have truly been a business that contributes and participates in your local community.
Glad to be here.
So that's all I, all I wanted to say other than, and I wish you much continued success and additional success now that this license goes through.
Grateful to have you as a resident and a, and a business here and grateful that the boys are following in your footsteps and doing, doing...
Yeah, I tried to steer him away, but you know...
I know. Equally delicious things here.
He was four when I opened the first restaurant, so he's ingrained.
It's in his blood. Well, the Nashville chicken sandwich is to die for. Nashville hot, was that what it's called? So good.
Thank you.
Okay. Did you have anything to add?
I want to thank Peter. I want to say, he's been great for the Town of Hatfield and he's, he's just been, family's been outstanding, so thank you for all you do for the Town of Hatfield, Peter.
We have to vote, right?
Yes.
A motion made in second.
We were halfway there.
Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Peter.
Does anybody have a bead on how long it takes from here to go to the state? I mean, is there any experience since the pandemic?
My experience has been about six weeks, but with the pandemic, I don't know.
Okay. All right.
Although you could also argue there probably aren't as many people applying for new things right now, so...
Yeah, there's more licenses open, that's for sure.
But they're all working at home and I am finding they're using that state office, that people are working at home, they are using that as an excuse for things to take a little longer.
So when it gets, so when things get sent out, do I get copied on, like can I follow up with them or is it strictly you guys that would follow up with them or...
We would follow up and you can contact us anytime, Peter, to see if we've heard anything.
Okay. We want to have a Father's Day cookout, so I'm hoping to get it in before mid-June, so...
Oh, I hope so.
That'd be great.
Well, you know, we submit the application, we can inquire, you know, as to how long they think they're...
Maybe, maybe they'll help if they're not doing anything. All right. Thanks, everyone.
Thank you.
All right, you.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Okay, so now we're going to move on to, we will, we'll skip back to the COVID update. Claudia, we appreciate you waiting here patiently. We'll turn it over to you if you wanted to give an update for townspeople.
Good evening, everyone. Things seem to be going very well in, in Hatfield. We're seeing a downward trend in the number of COVID cases. This past week, we had only four, the week before that, three. And overall statewide, we're, we're seeing a downward trend there as well, you know, largely in part, I think, to the number of vaccines that are being administered. So I think that things are looking very good and I'm hoping that things will continue to stay quiet.
Yeah, let's hope so. Do you have, do you, are you able to access any kind of information about how we're doing on vaccines in Hatfield, like a percentage of our population, or is that not information you're able to?
No, unfortunately, that's not information that I'm able to get ahold of.
Okay, just curious. Okay. I don't have any questions.
No, I, so Claudia had sent out the weekly update yesterday, so thank you for that, Claudia, which is always showing the latest and greatest from the governor's office and the state guidelines as well as referencing the CDC guidelines. So we, we will hopefully, our communities in Massachusetts see even more changes coming. I think the beginning of next week is another, I think May 9th or 10th is another earmark, is that the word? Or another, another date that restrictions could be changed.
Sort of a milestone.
A milestone, thank you. For where restrictions could be somewhat, some restrictions could be lifted or changed a bit. So I would encourage people in the meantime to continue to social distance when they're inside. You can see we all have our masks on, but when we go outside and we're six feet apart, we can all take our masks off now, so. And continue to get, continue to have your friends and relatives get vaccinated if possible because we're getting there.
I think we're all vaccinated, right? We're all, we're all fully vaccinated, which is, which is great, yeah.
Yep, so that's all I wanted to say. Claudia, thank you. I just wanted to also mention to the residents about more changes are coming and we'll keep them updated with the letters you send as well as the code red messages we send on Mondays.
Everybody in Town Hall, by the way, is fully vaccinated.
Oh, that's great. Oh, that's good news. Good.
I, you know, I think what was great about the, the last sort of announcement out of the governor's office was not just announcing the next step, but sort of establishing a pathway for really to get to where I think, you know, we all want to be, where things are much more back to normal. And it was nice to see that there was planning a little bit beyond just, just the next step. That helps people exactly like Peter Langlois and businesses who are trying to figure out how they're going to, you know, manage, manage the next few months. So that was, I was glad to see there was a little bit more information on that last time. So did you have anything you wanted to add?
No, just get vaccinated if you haven't, that's all. The sooner everybody gets vaccinated, the sooner we get opened up. That's, that's what I'm hearing from the CDC.
Exactly. Thank you, Claudia.
Okay, very good. Good night, everyone.
Good night.
Thank you, good night.
So topic three is our annual town meeting warrant.
So you have a copy of the warrant articles that has been signed and I would ask the So you have a copy of the warrant articles that has been signed, and I would ask the board, so the board last Monday did accept the warrant articles, but there wasn't a vote to approve the warrant. So just ask that the board vote to do that.
I will make a motion that we approve the warrant art, the warrant as presented.
I'll second it.
Motion made and seconded, any further discussion?
No.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, and then proposed zoning bylaw changes, Marlene?
Yes, so the planning board had a hearing on April 14th, and they took up two matters. One was to recommend where, where the words Board of Selectment appear in the zoning bylaws, and I believe it's one place, be replaced with Select Board. That is an article on the warrant, and as I said, the planning board held that hearing and recommends that to go forward. The second item, and I understand that they have taken a neutral stance on that, and that's to amend the zoning map, changing a portion of map 211 lot 32, shown as rural residential to light industrial, so that the entire lot is within the light industrial district.
Okay.
And that is an article on the warrant.
Okay, well, that's good. Townspeople have an opportunity to hear the merits of that and people's concerns and make a decision, so that's good.
And we took up the quorum reduction.
We already took up the quorum, so that's good. And then, Marlene, your report.
So Phase 2 Smith Academy Park Improvements Project. Actually, that invitation for bid is set to appear in the Central Register tomorrow and in the Daily Hampshire Gazette, and this is to construct the pavilion.
Yes.
So it's been quite involved pulling all that together and working with the architect.
I know with everything else.
I know.
Only question on, on the bids going out is now, when I know that the 350th was here, they wanted the cake to stay there until after the parade, so.
Right.
Do you guys have any kind of timeline for cake removal?
I think that there's plans, we actually have a meeting next week, but, and I'm sure we'll, we'll touch on that, but I believe the plan is to begin disassembling it fairly quickly.
They're looking at construction in July.
Yeah, I think that there'd be a little bit of time there.
Did it get sold to another town?
I don't know that for sure. I mean, I actually think there's a couple of towns interested.
I was going to say, a town contacted me and I gave them Bobby's.
We were going to have bidding wars, I don't know. But we, like I say, we have a meeting. We sort of held off on meetings for a little bit, because things, there was so much to do with planning the parade that we just sort of let those folks do what they needed to do, but we do have a meeting next Wednesday. Again, mostly we'll focus on the parade and the final details of the parade, but I'm sure we'll, I'll find out about that. And we'll keep townspeople apprised of all of that.
Generator, just to update the board, the generator replacement at the wastewater treatment plant, that is just waiting for delivery, and I believe Eric is expecting that very soon.
So there's no backorder or anything on that? I mean, it seems like there's so many things now people are having trouble getting, but maybe ginormous generators isn't one of them. Okay?
And then just a brief financial update. Accountant is starting, is moving, not starting, is moving into fiscal year-end mode. And of course, departments have, have been notified the last couple of department head meetings that they really need to be looking at their, their expense budgets. And departments have been asked to notify the accountant and myself if they anticipate any shortfall in their operations, budget operations. So the accountant is continuing to reconcile with the treasurer's office, and that's just music to my ears.
Oh, man.
It sure is.
All of us.
Well, a big thanks to all of them.
Excuse me, yes.
That is much appreciated.
And just quickly, if you're ready to move on to old business?
Sure.
There was a walk of the property out on White Rock Trail on Mountain Road there. The DPW was represented, and Mark Gelot from Open Space met out there with Mr. Aquadro. Mr. Aquadro had his attorney with him, and Mark Gelot had presented copies of the deed and pertinent documents. So they were provided to Mr. Aquadro's attorney, and he's going to review them, and then he'll be in touch with the town.
I think you have to do this one, too.
So everybody got to see it at the same time and have the same conversation at the same time?
I'm sorry, I missed part of that, I was.
So, good.
Yes.
I mean, that was the important thing.
So they agreed about the, is that what you said?
No, I don't know that there was any agreement at all. Mark Gelot provided copies, legal documents, copies of legal documents to Mr. Aquadro's attorney, and he is going to review them and then report back to the town.
Well, that's nice that, that Mark was willing to put them out there.
Yeah.
Is there a timeline or a timeframe that we would expect to hear back from Mr. Aquadro and his attorney? I, I'm just curious if they, you know.
Yeah, I would hope it wouldn't take too long, but I'm not aware of a timeline, but.
Right.
Especially, and it's getting to the time when people are going to want to be taking hikes and walks.
That's kind of where I was going with that.
If the signs shouldn't be there, then I'd like them to come down.
Certainly. Yeah, so I, you know, I think it would be reasonable to give them a couple of weeks, and then I'll follow up with, with Mr. Aquadro's attorney.
Yeah, maybe once you get through town.
Actually, Mark Gelot provided the attorney's name, so I have that.
Okay, great.
Marlene, we didn't have to take any kind of action on this, this is just the ABCC renewal.
So Karen, my understanding is that's a form that the board should have signed when they renewed the licenses for, for the calendar year 2021, and that form did not get submitted.
But, so, but we don't need to vote to sign the form?
You don't, because you already did, it's just a matter of, yeah, taking, signing that document and mailing it.
And just for townspeople, it's just a form certifying that everyone renewed their license there with the licenses.
Right, you didn't deny any licenses.
We didn't deny anybody, and everybody renewed, so it's just a formality.
Yes.
Two things.
Thank you.
Okay. For CAG.
Franklin Regional Council of Governments notified the DPW director. They're doing things a little differently this year. They're requiring municipalities to, well, in this case, the municipality would be the awarding authority, the Board of Selectmen, to name and authorize contract signatory, to sign the contract documents for any bids that Franklin Regional Council of Governments puts out to bid on the town's behalf, and then to permission to contract on, permission to the Franklin Regional Council of Governments to contract on the town's behalf. So two things the board needs to, not two votes, it could be in one vote, but just to vote a contract signatory and permission to the Franklin Regional Council of Governments.
Who is?
I'll make a motion to approve the contract with Franklin Regional Council of Governments for the collective highway bid participants.
Okay, and, and you could name the DPW director or the Board of Selectmen chair?
I don't mind doing it. I don't mind if, it doesn't matter to me.
And it'll be done electronically, too, when the signatures, when you sign.
Doesn't matter to me.
Yeah, I mean, it doesn't, it doesn't matter to me. I guess the only thing I would say is I didn't know if things are going to go directly through the DPW office in particular, which, would it be easier to just have the DPW director or his designee make the signatures versus whoever the chair is at the time?
I think it doesn't.
I mean, you know.
That would seem appropriate to authorize him to sign.
So you'll, will you add that to your motion?
And I'll add to my motion to have the DPW director be the chair.
All right, I will second that.
Okay, motion made and seconded, any further discussion?
No.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And then just a motion to grant permission to the Franklin Regional Council of Governments, was that included?
That was first.
Oh, it wasn't? Oh, okay, okay.
While we're still on that, I think just so people at home understand, we, we use the Franklin County Government to, for.
Procurement services.
Procurement services, thank you. And they, they buy in bulk, and so we benefit from reduced costs for, for whatever the product is.
And a huge benefit is not having to bid it ourselves, because it's a, it's a lot of work. And so they not only do the work of making sure that we're in compliance with all Chapter 30B requirements, but we also get better pricing, because they're buying on behalf of a bunch of communities and other entities, so.
And prior to the FERCog, actually Hampshire Council of Governments used to do that. We utilize that program as well.
That saves the town money, that's the bottom line.
Money and time, money and time.
Right.
Yep. But they're a great organization. That's it, it looks like, Marlene?
And the only other item I mentioned just prior to the start of the meeting, Select Energy has revised the company name. So I don't know, actually, it's right in this, this top email here, if you'd like to make a motion to approve that notice of assignment.
Yep, so I'll make the motion, but, okay, poor, man. Okay, so Select Energy is the company that was involved with the school department for the, for the solar project. They have since, I don't want to say this wrong, they have since sold their interests, they have since been taking. The financing is now being done by a third party or a different company. So we had already approved this at our last meeting, but then it was brought to our attention by Select Energy that they, they gave us the wrong, the exact name and spelling of the company actually taking it over. So I'm going to make a motion, hopefully with exactly what we're doing here. So I will make a motion to approve the attached revised document, which is a name change only in the entity name, which is changing from Anell XMAPV Portfolio 1 LLC over to Anell XMAPV Portfolio 2 LLC. The difference being, we had changed it originally at their request to Portfolio 1. We are now changing it from Portfolio 1, I guess, right? Because we already approved that, to Portfolio 2. So it basically is just a name change. We're not doing anything else contractually or correct. So that's my motion.
Well, I'll, I'll second that.
I couldn't repeat it if I had to, so.
A motion's been made and seconded, any further discussion?
This is the last one we're doing, so I hope they got it right this time, Marlene. Feel free to tell them that that's my comment.
All those in favor?
Here we are.
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And that's all we have, so I will take a motion to adjourn.
I will make a motion to adjourn.
I'll second it.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Remember, next Tuesday, everybody.
Yes.
Almira. Pavilion, 6 p.m.
Less than an hour tonight, wow.
Yep, thank you, John.